We want to welcome you to this first town hall meeting. This is really an offshoot of Coffee with a Cop. We decided to try this forum to give everybody the opportunity for the people who work to come out and express their concerns or problems that they're having. All topics are on board tonight, but they all have to be police-related. If we have several topics or the repetition of that, we'll ask that you wait and talk to us afterwards. But all topics, everybody's welcome to come up. There's some things that you have to do tonight though. When we have Coffee with a Cop, everybody kind of calls out from their seat. We can't do that here this evening. You'll have to come up to the microphone and just take your time, but there is a two-hour time limit tonight. We're starting at seven and we're going to end at nine o'clock. It ends at nine o'clock. If in fact you have any problems, we will stay and we will talk to you. I would ask that if you have a problem with your neighbor that, do not use names. You can talk to us afterwards and we'll be more than happy to address that. But these are generic problems and stuff that's going on in the neighborhood. As you can see, we have statistics here and in fact, I think we have everybody here so we can get underway. So let me introduce people from my left to my right. We have on the far end here, we have Detective Chris Clark. He's in charge of our detective bureau. He's a supervisor. We have Lieutenant Nelson Whitney. He's in charge of community policing and the detective bureau. We have Lieutenant Henry Ward, he's in charge of our uniform division. We have Todd Plentnik, who's in charge of everything. Todd is multifaceted. Then we have my right-hand woman, Faith, who is my administrative assistant. On the far end, we have our board chairman, Mr. Harvey, who is with us here this evening. So without further delay, would somebody like to come up and start it off? And don't be bashful, we only have two hours here tonight. So whatever you've come here to talk about, and if somebody doesn't want to come up, we can address some of the issues here tonight. For instance, okay.
I'm Pat Hunt. I live in Willowood. And I've been hearing a lot about all these robberies in my neighborhood, my section in particular. And I don't know which ones are true and which ones are not. How many were there and is there anybody under arrest for these or?
Let me-
My life and kids are nervous.
And that's why you're here.
I was born and raised in Levittown and we left the doors and windows open all the time and I don't feel able to do that.
In connection with that, and we'll answer you in one second here. One of the reasons we're having this here this evening is to be, I want everybody to be ever vigilant of what's going on. It's summertime, we want you to connect with your neighbors. If you see somebody in your neighborhood that shouldn't be there, or you think it's suspicious, pick up the telephone. We want to hear from you. If you see somebody walking around late at night, that's how we were able to make an arrest in Pinewood with the vandalism and the cross burning and all. For somebody that took the opportunity, that saw somebody that shouldn't be in their neighborhood, I can assure you that we're using every tool that we have in our toolbox right now. But I don't want to put these tools out here. We're going to be very generic tonight in telling you how we're combating this stuff and we are making progress. But you're our main tool. Without you people here, without you in your neighborhood, when you leave the house at night, close your windows, lock them. Do everything that you can to protect your neighbors on either side of you, on across the street. If you're not talking with your neighbor, still be ever vigilant of what's going on in your neighborhood. Now with your question, sir, I'm going to direct it to Sergeant Chris Clark.
Nelson actually prepared some information about the burglaries and has some more additional information to share.
To speak directly to Willowood, we've had a spike in burglaries recently in the township. We haven't really had a spike in your section. There have been a couple of burglaries in your section as there have been in other sections of Fairliss Hills and Levittown, but not a large number.
And we have made one recent arrest in Willowood specifically on the drive of a juvenile who committed a burglary.
Step up to the phone.
Would you say these are crimes of opportunity? These are opportunists? These are, you know, drug people from Philly, from Trenton? What are we looking at here? What kind of crimes are these? I mean burglaries, 61, you know, retail thefts, fine, but what kind? I mean, what are we dealing with exactly?
Believe it or not, they're all connected. And when you say crime of opportunity, every time you leave your window open, it's a crime of opportunity. But what we're saying is that what is the catalyst behind this? There could be any number of reasons. If you just saw the Inquirer yesterday, there was a big article about the use of heroin. And the use of heroin is tremendous right now. And there's people out in the street and they have to take care of their habit, so they're looking to hit houses and stuff like that. And I'm not saying that's the only reason, but that's one of many reasons there.
That's like the first line of defenses of keeping everything locked up?
Keeping everything locked up, but making sure that people are closing their blinds. You have air conditioning, central air conditioning, you know? Make sure that you have lights on at night. If you have some sensors and you have sensor lights, make sure that they're operational. And talk to your neighbors. Make sure that you're communicating with your neighbors. You're our best tool out here, believe it or not. We're a small number and, but with you people, we're a large number and we need you.
One more question before I sit down. While we're here, who's watching our houses?
Ma'am, I have one answer for you. They were talking about crimes of opportunity and stuff. We racked our brains together and we're trying to figure out a pattern. We couldn't really find any. The only thing that we can associate with it is when these guys are going into your houses, the ones that were going in at night, were going in, they must be looking through the window and they see a purse on the kitchen table, or they see a laptop on the kitchen table, something that's close by. They're not going into the house, they're not rummaging through the whole house, they're not entering bedrooms. They're going in, they see what they want, they grab it and they get out. So if you could pull your blinds down, make sure that your purses are put somewhere where you can't be seen from the outside, any kind of valuables that are portable, cash, computers, anything like that that you can move away from the windows, it would discourage these guys from going in. And the windows were open. Now, I lived and grew up in Levittown, like most probably all of you, and we all know that in the summertime, if you have an air conditioner in your bedroom, you're going to close your door. And these people know that. They're smart enough to figure that out, that you're not going to hear anything. And that's what they're walking around the house, they see an air conditioner sticking out the bedroom window, and you have a living room window open, they're going to go throw it. So if you're going to bed at night, close your living room window and then you can shut the door. They're not breaking glass. We only had one burglary out of all these burglaries where someone actually broke the glass. That was a daylight burglary and we have a good suspect in that job. All the other jobs were just pulling screens off and going through the window.
Yes, sir.
I live right behind the school there, Penn Valley School, and I have a lot of problems with the school crossing where all the kids are doing their drugs and selling drugs. They'll drop off, they'll do a lot of drugs there. I find bongs in the back there, little packages all the time, and I don't see nothing getting done. I call the cops all the time and I don't see anything getting done with it.
I haven't seen anything.
I call them numerous times. And I haven't had them out there this year because I gave up calling, but yeah.
Well, first let me say, never give up calling.
It aggravates me.
Never. Yeah, I know and I understand your frustration, but just because you don't sizzle doesn't mean that we're not doing something. And that's, you know, some of this stuff, we just can't divulge this evening. But I know you're frustrated. Do not stop calling.
Because I mean, they've broken my fence, they've broken my trees, threw them over and climbed my fence. I mean, I had a kid out there oggy and one day I called.
Before you leave this evening, would you give my assistant the exact location so I'm going to make sure that we're all on board with this?
It's right at the crosswalk. It's the worst thing, the school crosswalk. It's a mayhem for drugs and they ride trucks through there, they do all their drugs there, they leave it all over the place. And it's been, I've been here 33 years and my dad was a cop. I don't know if you remember, Woody?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's been going on since we lived there and it just ain't stopping. It's actually getting worse.
Please do continue to call, but what you have to remember, when you do call for whatever you may see or hear, always ask to speak with an officer. The radio room gets to call in, well, it's in Ivyland now, but we're dispatched out of Ivyland. And if you don't specifically say that you want to speak with an officer, sometimes it's busy that the officer is going to go out, check the area. If they don't see anything, they may go on to the next call. If they talk to you directly, you're going to have a whole lot more information to pass on, descriptions where you're finding bongs or drug paraphernalia specifically, and it gives the beat officer in that sector a specific spot to keep an eye out when they're out doing the patrol work.
I don't know if the school can get involved in that. I mean, it's school property. They're doing drugs within the school, they're selling it right in the school area. I mean, it's school property. I mean, isn't that a major issue? They're doing it-
Well, the school works with us. The school does everything it can. We all work together in conjunction with each other. But just like the lieutenant said, if you call, make sure that an officer comes to your house.
Yeah, they usually do.
Okay.
By that time, it's all gone, you know? The kids are gone and, I mean, I don't know how else. By the time I call, they've already done their thing and gone, you know?
But that doesn't mean in roll call the following evening, or the next shift coming on, that they pass this information along. This stuff never stops and it keeps going.
Okay, well.
But I don't want you to get discouraged and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you know, dealing with it all the time.
I'm certainly not going to ask to put yourself in danger, ask you to put yourself in danger, but-
No, I go out there, I don't care.
Everybody these days seems to have cell phones with video capability. If you see something and you can do it from your house, try to video kids-
No, I go out there, they know me. I go right after them. I'm not taking that stuff.
I don't blame you.
We're not advocating that, but-
Yeah, sometimes you have to do what you have to do.
I understand.
All right.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
That's all right. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I live in Levittown, Vermillion Hills section. Two days before Memorial Day, my house got broken into, I know you were saying something about laptops. I don't know if, there's two different sets of burglars running around, but they were very specific in my front window. My daughter thought it was locked, but it wasn't. She didn't push it down all the way, but right to the bedroom, jewelry, tax returns, any loose cash was out there, left laptops, left cameras, all kinds of stuff like that. We checked all the pawn shops, but do you guys go around checking pawn stops also? I know my cousin's a police officer. She said that they're supposed to put everything online, but I haven't heard anything back yet about anything. We checked them ourselves, but on a main drive, you know, I'm not going to mention names, my neighbor's a police officer. There's someone in and out of my house almost all the time, so there was a four-hour timeframe that no one was home, but they went right in. But I'm just wondering with the burglaries and you were saying they're possibly drug-related, do you guys randomly ever check the halfway houses in our area? My wife's a social worker and she said there's like a ton of them, about 80 of them, I think, in Falls Township, Falls and Bristol Township, I guess?
No, there's not 80.
Not 80? All right, because she gets the addicts in all the time and a lot of them are from Chester, from Philadelphia. And is there something to do to keep, not keep them out of our area, but do they check the location of where these, the people are coming from originally for the halfway houses and stuff?
I can't speak to that because I'm not familiar with how they set up the halfway houses. I can tell you, there's only one halfway house in Falls.
One?
One.
I had a friend who owned two.
No, not in Falls.
Or at least, I don't know if she was doing them legally, but-
If they're doing it, then it's unknown to us. But I can tell you, they have to, it goes with building and zoning and they have to check with them and they have to have certain permits and all.
And is there any way, I'm on the corner of Vicar and Vermillion Drive and then Village Lane, which I grew up on, comes down. I've called numerous times about maybe having an unmarked car sitting there. It's almost impossible to get out of my driveway without one was getting plowed by, I've seen school buses go through there, I've seen the kids flying through 60, 70 miles an hour and the school bus stops in front of my house, so it's just a matter of time before one of the kids gets hit there, but uh-
Let me say this to you, Officer Ward, excuse me, Lieutenant Ward is just working on safe driving right now and he will address that.
Yeah, you could sit out there and write enough tickets, we wouldn't have to pay taxes for the rest of our lives. It's 50 times-
Sir, I apologize. I missed the location again, Vicar and Vermillion and Vicar?
When you come in off of New Falls Road, it's a, I'm on the corner of Vicar and Vermillion. So I have three stop signs in front of my house and one on the side and it's, it looks like the Fast and Furious out there, but, and like I said, my house is on a corner lot, open as could be, and they went in at between seven and 11 o'clock on a Friday night and cleaned out all my wife's jewelry, but I don't know if, like I said, they checked the pawn shops locally at all or anything like that, so.
I can't go into the mechanism, but I can tell you, they're working on it.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm from Willowood. Actually, we're original owners, my parents were. I was wondering, when you talk about a halfway house, we're getting a new halfway house supposedly in our neighborhood. How are they controlled or will you be-
I can't comment on that ma'am because it's not a police matter. I can only tell you that you would have to check with the Board of Supervisors. I don't know how that works.
And one other question, once, apparently they are coming, but once they're in, what, when do we call or when do we don't call?
I don't mean to interrupt you, but Mr. Harvey could address this more than I could.
Yeah, there is, as Chief Walcock said, there has been a recovery house in Birch Valley since 2007. It's the only facility of its kind in Falls Township. The owner of that facility is apparently now opening a similar one in Willowood.
Yes.
Those recovery houses are controlled by state and federal law. Essentially, there isn't anything the township can do. It's not our responsibility, it's not our power to monitor, we don't have the power to monitor them. We don't have the authority to control them in any way.
Yeah, I'm aware they're covered on the American Disabilities Act.
Right.
But what I was wondering is, we have 14 children under the age of 10 within four houses of this house.
Right.
When do we call or when are we being paranoid? What should we do basically?
The one thing I can tell you, and again, I was told by a few people, and I know it was on social media, that in fact, one person called me five o'clock this evening and said, oh, I hear they're having a meeting tonight about the Willowood Recovery House, which is obviously not accurate. That's not what this is for, but I'll address it now in case there are other people who have similar concerns. The house in Birch Valley, like I said, has been there for eight years. And talking with our code enforcement officer and talking just, literally just minutes ago with the chief of police, we have absolutely no records of any kind in terms of complaints, calls from neighbors, whether code violations, you know, the grass is always cut, the house is always in good shape. There are no police records of any kind for any calls for that facility. It is, and the one in Willowood is also going to be for alcohol-related.
Oh, it's alcohol, not Dr. Ari?
Correct. Correct. And there are restrictions in terms of who can be in there. And one of the restrictions is that it cannot be anybody, anybody, who is on any kind of sex offender list. They are prohibited completely. It's not for that purpose at all. It is people that essentially, or it's court mandated, it could be people that have had DUI, something of that nature, who are, and it's going to be only men who are going to be living there. So again, it is covered, as you said, by the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it is something that does restrict our ability to really do much of anything. And so it's kind of where we stand right now. They do not need approval from the Board of Supervisors. They fall into a category where they can, you know, the person who bought the house, it's a bigger house, you know?
Right, I understand this is about Town Watch, but just one other question.
Sure.
Is there a limit to how many people you can have in a house in Levittown? Like how many people you can push into a house? By square footage or by bathroom or kitchen or?
No, no. I don't know. I don't know if the federal or state regulations have any kind of cap, but in terms of, you know, they fall into the same category as a residential home. So if you have someone who has a, a house has a second story on it in Levittown, put an addition on, something like that, we can't, we have no power to go in and say, well, it's you and your husband and your four kids and your in-laws moved in and your nephew and your cousin, no, you can't have that. We have no authority to do that. And this falls into that same category. So again, that's our, that's our code. I don't know what the federal or state laws say.
Oh, thank you, you've been very informative. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
How you doing? I'm Neil DiSpirito. I live at one White Spruce Lane. I apologize to the board, it's the same topic, and I know you said this was only for police matters, but since it was brought up, Mr. Harvey, I have two simple questions. My first question is, and you responded to this woman, that there's nothing the township can do about it. I had to file three permits and come to a township meeting this year to put up my Christmas lights. You're telling me that a business can move into my neighborhood at the end of my street making money in a residential property that's not zone commercial without any clearance, any variance, any meeting, nothing from the township building?
Listen, may I just say this to you, okay? We're kind of out of the zone where we want to be. We'll be more than happy to answer that question for you after the meeting here, but these are really, we want to stick to the police topic and law enforcement.
I understand that and I apologize, but there's 25 other people here that are going to come up and answer the same question.
And my answer has to be the same.
If you don't answer them.
Yeah, and that's, and that's again, and I understand it, I said there was some misinformation about what tonight's meeting was about. And I apologize for those people that came here thinking that's what it was about, because this meeting's been scheduled for weeks and weeks and weeks to focus on issues like the burglaries and traffic concerns and things like that. Basic answer to your question is that the area Willowood is zoned NCR, which is Neighborhood Commercial, Residential. Home-based businesses are allowed, provided they don't, they fit in certain categories. And one of the categories is they can't have deliveries, they can't have signs outside, they can't have, they can't be generating immense amounts of traffic. That's why you see a lot of, you know, things like dentist's office and doctor's offices and things. It falls into that category. They don't need any kind of special, they fall on a permit just basically to, because the house was sold. They have to get a use and occupancy permit, which our laws don't allow us to not give them. And so they fall into that category, which is why you see so many of them, Bristol Township has a lot, and that's the reason for it, so.
Eighty number earlier was actually for Levittown. I think it's 73 halfway houses in the area of Levittown, not Falls Township.
Right.
My last question, and again, I apologize for taking up the board's time. Does that mean legally, like I can invite 10 of my friends to come and live with me and charge them rent? Because I mean, anymore.
Yes. I mean, I think as, you know, obviously as a business, if it's a rental, then you have to, I'm sure there'd be fire inspections and things of that nature, because just like with apartments and things, but, okay?
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Sharon Williams. I live on Auburn Road. And my question is, with these crimes that are going on, are these people on foot or are they in cars that they can get away quicker? Because it sounds like they make it on foot and if they are, they can get away quicker if they live in their neighborhood.
I'll let Lieutenant Whitney answer that.
You know, we've actually seen both. We've seen people who leave their homes to conduct the criminal activity that they're involved in. If it's residential burglaries, they'll walk to a place they could do it. Or they'll have a kind of a safe house, so to speak, a relative or friend that they could retreat to. And we frequently see that they'll park a car, which is something that we encourage our Town Watch groups and our citizens to keep an eye out for. You know, when you live on a street for a long time, you get to know the cars in your neighborhood. If you see somebody park in a vehicle that you're not familiar with, we encourage people to call that in, day or night, because a lot of these burglaries do happen during the day, which you wouldn't necessarily know, you know, if you weren't in a meeting like this. And to spot that vehicle allows us to interrupt that crime. So we do see both. And most of the time, they are our local people. We have had people from outside the community come in to do commercial burglaries that go up and down the East Coast, but by and large, the burglaries that we see in our community are people from either our community or adjoining communities, so they're local people.
So it could be either way, either foot people or drivers?
It definitely goes both ways.
I have another question. I understand now, Thursday night is like it used to be a Friday night when I was growing up, as far as party night. You need to come around Auburn Road on Thursday night past midnight.
At your house.
You will not believe the hot rods that are going up and down. And I mean fast, because they wake me up all the time. So if you want to park in my driveway because I'm right on the corner, you will catch them like that.
You know, we'll pass that on to the midnight shift sergeant tonight. That's well timed.
He is duly noted. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tracy Hopkins and I'm a current Thorn Ridge resident. Grew up in Lake Side, lived in Levittown all my life. We have a great group on Facebook, Town Watch Group, love it, it's great. I was going to save this question until I'm here, but I think for any dog lovers, it's an important question. A lot of people post about guns on Facebook. I'll shoot first, ask questions later, which, whatever. Or I'll sit my dog there. My question is, somebody comes into my home and my dog attacks them, is that my dog's fault and my dog could be put down or is my dog in its rights?
I will let Lieutenant Ward answer that.
No, your dog would not be in trouble. They came into your house. Your dog's good.
Just follow up to that. Windows and doors have to be closed and locked or can my doors and windows be open and someone walks in uninvited?
If they're not invited to your house and they walk in, they're a trespasser and you can protect yourself any way you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your involvement with the Town Watch Group. You guys are a real help to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I live in Thorn Ridge and I have a little list of questions here. My first question is, how many police in total does Falls Township have?
Fifty-three.
And how many are on any given shift generally?
It varies. It, because of vacation, so on and so forth. We're mandated to have at least four officers and one supervisor on the street. That's the minimum. Sometimes it can be as many as 10 or as little as five.
Okay. And how frequently do you patrol through the various neighborhoods?
The entire shift. I can't tell you. It's set up by the supervisor, it's set up by the corporal and or sergeant. They're assigned different sectors and depending on what's going on.
The township's broken up into four sectors. Each officer, if there's a minimum of four officers and a supervisor, each officer takes a sector that they are responsible for. And they're roughly the same size, so if one of the sectors, there'd be one officer assigned to each sector if the officer, minimum, minimum. And if that officer happens to be tied up on a call, an officer from another sector and a call goes out in the sector where the officer's tied up, the officer from the next sector would cover that call, you know, and vice versa.
So is it then that each sector should be patrolled at least once per shift?
We try. I would be a liar to say it happens every day. It sometimes is an impossibility.
We live, like I said, we're in Thorn Ridge. My husband works from home. I'm out walking all the time. Maybe we've missed it, but I've never seen police patrolling through Thorn Ridge. I see them in there when there's an issue, but I was just wondering what the frequency of the patrolling was, if it was proactive or if it was strictly a reactive when you get a call for something, or more reactive than proactive, given your staffing?
Ma'am, there's a lot of variables entered into that, depending on the call volume on a given night, depending on what's going on, accidents, there's a whole lot of variables that go to that. But I can tell you, I find it, it's possible maybe during one shift that nobody goes through your sector, but maybe possibly you didn't see the car. It could happen, and naturally, like the lieutenant alluded to, but they're required to hit their entire sector. The premise behind this is visibility. We want you to see those black and white cars on the street. Now, we also have what they call stealth cars, which aren't, they're just plain package cars that are out there, and they could be in your neighborhood, and you may not see them, or you may not notice them. And that means that they're doing their job.
And another question I have is, the crime logs that are in the newspaper, is that something that the police reports to the paper, or that the paper requests from the police department? Because frequently, I see Falls Township reports no crime, not just Falls, other places too, but other than Falls. And one time I saw that in the paper. My husband and I actually have been victims of a crime at the police at our house, and for that week it said Falls Township reports no crime.
I will direct this to Lieutenant Ward, who deals with the newspaper on a regular basis.
We try to give the newspaper everything that we get. Sometimes things fall through the cracks. I have noticed that, too, that I have given a detailed list of crimes that happened that weekend, and I'll read the paper and see no crime reported. I can't tell them what to report.
Right.
Maybe it's just not, you know, it's a small crime, and they didn't think it was newsworthy. But like, all the major arrests, burglaries, anything major is always sent to the press right away.
Right, because I'll see things for Bristol Township, and it gives like virtually no information, undisclosed crime by an undisclosed person for an undisclosed amount, and Falls it'll just say nothing.
A lot of the arrests, though, the press can get that themselves. It's public information, they contact the district courts, and they can get any copy of any criminal complaint that we filed, and they can see exactly what's happening.
Okay, and also, I had a question. Thorn Ridge has a community watch, and I see the signs on the drive, but aside from having the signs and calling when there's something suspicious in the neighborhood, is there anything that neighborhood watches can do specifically to be proactive in their neighborhoods?
We'll constantly be in contact with each other and have a phone chain. If you see something, if somebody, if one of your Town Watch group is going to be out on that weekend, and somebody says, can you keep an eye on my house? There's any number of things that you can do. We don't want you out there with a baseball bat walking the neighborhood. No, we don't want that. But you know what? If, on these nice nights, if somebody just sits out on their patio there and just observes them, once again, their eyes and ears. And if somebody's going on vacation, number one, you should notify us and let us know. So we can have somebody go out to your house and check it out. We will do that. Also, if you're going away, let your neighbors know, beside your Town Watch group. And I can't emphasize enough that, you know, we're all caught up in a busy life, myself also. I have daughters that play softball, so on and so forth, and I'm coming and going. And I'm sure all of you people are doing, but you know what? We gotta depend on each other. If we can't depend on each other here, we're only fifty-three. We got a whole army in here tonight, and we need you. And it sounds like a cliche, but we really do need you. And without us working together, this thing doesn't work.
One final question. The statistics up here, is that for all of 2014, or is that for January through July for both years?
That is from January first of this year and last year to the current date today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
I live in Elderberry. I wanted to see if the thefts, the burglaries, are related to the people stealing change out of the cars for drug money. My house has gotten, at least twice, because I have a one-year-old that likes to click the clicker, you know?
Right.
Forget to lock it.
That's probably one of the most frequent crimes we have in the township, is thefts from vehicles. And I've gone into the press numerous times, I've been on TV a couple times, and it's as simple as locking your car. Ninety percent of the cars that are getting hit are unlocked, windows down. People have left guns in the car, unlocked. They lose guns. If you lock your door, unless you have a laptop sitting on the seat of your car or something valuable, they're not going to smash your window, because they know your neighbor is going to leave his car unlocked. If you go down, up, and down one street in Levittown and just take change, you could probably have about forty bucks by the time you get done at the end of the street, and that's what these guys are doing. But when you lock your cars, when you lock them, it just goes away.
Well, I didn't know, I thought this was just a burglary, but if we're on the traffic stuff, too, what are we doing about the dirt bikes and ATVs and anything that shouldn't be on the road driving through the section? You know how many times I see that every day?
We try our best to do that, but as you can imagine, once you turn the red lights on and somebody takes off on a dirt bike, we're not going to chase them. Sometimes it's not even worth to turn the red lights on, because if you see it's a young kid on a bike, we're not going to do that. We'll try to figure out where they're at. It would be great if you guys could call us, because you guys probably know where they live. If you could tell us, you know, like, hey, Joe Blow just left on his ATV, and we get to know where that address is, and we see an ATV the next day, well, we have information that there's an ATV here, and we can go to the house. But we do not want to be, and I'm sure you do not want us chasing dirt bikes through your neighborhoods and ATVs, it's just going to end in tragedy, and we're not going to do it, it's not worth it.
Put out the word on stuff like that, too. If you see somebody on a dirt bike or an ATV, it's somebody in your neighborhood or in the neighborhood right next door, and if they're doing it on a constant basis, somebody knows who that person is. Ask around, ask a neighbor if you can. Again, I'm not encouraging spying on anybody, but take a picture or a video of it, we might know who it is. We might be able to identify it through the dirt bike, the ATV. I had a recent episode where I was advised of a track behind, in the woods in Falls Township, and I went out and talked to a person who gave me some information as to who was doing it, and the problem was quelled for the most part. So just be vigilant, watch, know your neighborhood, know who's there, who has the dirt bikes and the quads. And if you call the police, ask specifically for the ready room to send an officer to your house, and give them the information you have, and we'll try to work it out.
I wouldn't care, but it's just, it's just, seeing, I mean, there's a group, I see like, three flights, look at, I mean, there's quite a group, I see a group of like, ten. Like, just do what we want, you know? But, um...
Are you calling us?
No, I don't bother.
You gotta call.
You have to call. You really do.
You gotta call. If you're, if you're not calling, how do we know? And I'm not chastising you, but once again, you're our eyes out there, and you're coming here tonight, and thank you for coming here tonight. But we need you. We need you to pick up that telephone.
What else are we doing about? I mean, the cars speeding through the sections. I mean, I live on the drive, and, I mean, sometimes I want to put trash cans out front of cars, because it's bad.
Right now, Lieutenant Ari is not here this evening. He's on the traffic committee with Mr. Dentz, one of our supervisors, and a group of people from the area. They are addressing issues like this. We're putting out, they're doing everything humanly possible to address these issues, plus the fact that they work in concert with Lieutenant Ward here about traffic details. The sergeants are instructed, the corporals are instructed. Your drive, they'll sit out there. They can only sit out there for so long, but if you, once again, if you don't call us, we don't know. And you know what the strange part about that is? It's your neighbors. It's your neighbors who live there. We had so many complaints on Austin Drive, but guess what? Most of the time, when we started giving out citations, everybody was angry with us because they lived on Austin Drive. So, you know, I say to you...
About speed bumps?
No.
You know, you...
No, you can't do speed bumps.
Why not?
One? I, well, once again, I, you know, we don't have enough time to go into speed bumps tonight, but they're not practical.
Sir, if you're constantly seeing speeders, it really is as simple as trying to grab the tag on the car. When the officer stops by your house, give us the tag, we'll run it down. And although we may not be able to identify who was driving the car at that time, certainly the patrol officer will go out and knock on the door where that tag comes back to and say, hey, listen, there was an anonymous report of you speeding through the neighborhood, knock it off. If it continues to happen, you know, we can take further action by trying to hide somebody around the corner. But you need to, you try to get us a tag, and we'll run it down from there.
Just so you know, we did redeploy officers this summer from community policing assignments to the road, based in part on some of the areas identified by the traffic committee. On the drive was one of them, and we had special detail set up to try to catch people speeding. So, you know, we are responding to the reports from the traffic committee to the problem areas in the township. But the chief's right, normally, and I've gone out there myself, everybody I stop is a resident.
I can tell you every car that speeds through my section, I sit out front of them. Yep, there goes that car again. I know exactly where he lives. Yep, that car. Would these burglaries, are you putting more cops in the streets instead?
We've had special detail set up, overtime details, to put additional people on the road, both in and out of uniform. We've done that, yes.
You're welcome. Could I remind everybody, I just got word from the gentleman who tapes this. When you come up to the microphone, could you get a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you.
I wanted to find out a little bit more about the robberies, like a breakdown of how many people we think are out there, how many have been apprehended, what the, and also a timeline. Is this more a daytime thing? Is this more a nighttime thing? If you can kind of break that down for us a little bit more, if there's a pattern, if it's more...
Yeah. You know, certain hours?
Because, you know, I'm, a lot of people are at work all day, and I have a nine-year-old grandmother at home who, the next-door neighbor told her about it, and she's now super paranoid.
Sure.
To date, we've made five arrests for burglaries, which is very good. The reason why we put these burglaries out so much in the press was concerning us, is most of the burglaries we have residentially are during the daytime. Very rarely will people go into somebody's house when they know people are home. So we were really concerned, because we had a string of about eight to ten where four cars were in the driveway, and these guys were still going into the house, and we were afraid of a violent confrontation. Since July 2nd, we have not had any more nighttime burglaries, and we've taken these five people in custody. We're hoping that either one of them or them altogether are responsible for all the nighttime burglaries. But we haven't had any since then. The detectives are doing some more follow-up stuff. We have a new tool in the township with DNA. We're waiting for some results to come back, and hopefully, when we get that back, we can pin all those burglaries on, one of the, or all the five people that we have in custody now.
So it's possible that a greater majority of them are in custody?
It's possible. When they stop, you don't know why they stop, you don't know why they, if they, we scared them away, if they went into the facility, if they were arrested on another charge, or something else may have happened.
And it'll be made public, how many they're connected to?
Yes, when we find out if we have the person that's connected to all of them, we'll release that information.
And what is the timeline on how, how long it takes to get the results back?
It takes thirty days for the DNA results to come back, and we submitted them, I believe, last week.
We expect the results by the end of the month.
By the end of the month.
Okay. And has anyone been caught in relation to any of the going on in Thorn Ridge?
We did arrest one juvenile for at least one of the burglaries in Thorn Ridge.
Was that recent?
That was in the beginning of the month, or the end of June.
But nothing, but nothing else so far?
Uh...
From Thorn Ridge?
Thorn Ridge? I don't think so, of any of the burglaries that occurred in Thorn Ridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I have one question. Actually, I want to thank you anyways, because I'm a Willowood resident. I'm actually on vacation for the last two weeks, and I see cops up and down the street all day. I don't know whether you're out for calls or not, but I'm glad to see you in section. We used to see the signs, they were like political signs. You could put them in the front yard, and they said, slow down, Falls Township. Do they have anything that we can get that say Town Watch? And, because I'm sure half the members of Willowood would be happy to hold on in front, you know, if they could just maybe deter people, hey, we're home, and we're watching now, we have a group together. Is there anything like that, like the slow-down signs that we see?
I'll redirect this to Lieutenant Whitney.
If you start a Town Watch, then yes, you can put a Town Watch sign in your community. At the moment, we only have three active Town Watch groups, and Willowood has yet to form one, so I invite you to form one in Willowood, we would welcome that.
All right, Willowood. You didn't answer your best sign. Did I? You got it.
Well, if you form a Town Watch group, you can put a Town Watch sign up. We don't put dummy signs out there, so.
How do you form a Town Watch?
If you want to contact me after the meeting, I can direct you to the right people here, and we'll set you up. It's an easy thing to do.
Surely, there's got to be more questions here.
I've got a question.
Come on up to the mic, Mr. Wilson.
There's some people outside, if you want to answer, come in. There's some seats up front.
In the back there, everybody, there's some seats up front here, if you'd like to get a seat.
Do you have any portable surveillance cameras, like Bristol Township put up, or do you have any plans of getting any, that may record a lot of this activity that goes on, even when the police are not present?
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson, using the microphone, sorry, they couldn't hear you in the back of the microphone.
Do you have any of the portable cameras, like they have in Bristol Township, the surveillance cameras? And if you don't have them, do you plan on getting them, so that they could record some of the activity when the police are not present, that you may see familiar cars or people in the neighborhoods where stuff's occurring?
We have access to cameras. They're not ours, they're through the county or another private agency. We had some at one time, but the technology changes so fast that by the time, you know, you use them for a year, they got a better camera out. So the county does have cameras, when we request them, we can get them. We have used them in the past, they have helped us out with some of the cases. We don't tell you where we put them, you don't see us putting them out, they're there. When we see a need for one in an area, we will call the county, and they will help us out with cameras.
Well, I guess I'll direct this question to Mr. Harvey, then why don't we purchase them?
We've never, in defense of Mr. Harvey, we never requested them, because it comes out of our budget, and we might, you know, we have to be responsible for our budget. And what we find is, they change so quickly. Now, the county's got cameras that can see eighty-five feet in the dark, which is phenomenal. They're willing to buy them, they're willing to let us use them. That's what we do.
Well, it seems like a lot of these towns get grants for boat ramps, for cameras, for other things, and we don't seem to be getting any of that. We seem to just go right into the bank account, buy stuff.
You've gotten grants?
Yeah, I mean, we do get grants for equipment that we need, but, I mean, if it's anything, it's my decision. I don't see the reason to spend money when I can use it for something else, when I can just go to the county and say, you know, can we use your cameras? And they get new cameras every year. I mean, it's taxpayers' money, we all belong to Bucks County, and they're willing to help us out. I just don't think it's financially wise to use our money for that when we can still get them.
Do you have any in place now, that we have this rash of burglaries?
I can't tell you any operational details, but we, the Willowood jobs, where we had the vandalisms and stuff like that, we utilized cameras, and they were very successful.
Thank you.
I just got a notice from Mr. Markey back there. Please, when you come up to the microphone, please talk into the microphone, he's getting very angry with me.
It doesn't sound like it.
I don't know.
That's a very good point.
Yeah. We'll call the county.
Batteries are dead.
Testing one-two, testing one-two. I mean, it's the normal volume it's at. Just need you guys to speak into it more.
All right, so apparently, you have to get real close to it.
If you don't have any questions, do you have a, come up, step up, sir? And after this gentleman's done, do you have any desires, any proactive things that we're not doing that you want done? And think about that a minute. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Wayne Rogers, I live over at North Park, and I'm hearing a lot of stuff with juveniles. The first gentleman talked about the groups down by Penn Valley, the ATVs, the dirt bikes. When we do catch these juveniles, we get their names, are we holding the parents accountable? Or are we just dropping these kids off at the house, and we'll see them when we see them, and we'll do something back?
As far as ATVs and dirt bikes and stuff, if we catch the kids, usually if it's a first-time offense, we seize the ATVs and the motorcycles, which is a pretty expensive venture for the parents. And then we make the parents come back in, and we explain to them. There is nowhere in Falls Township it's legal to drive a dirt bike or ATV, unless you own a large plot of property and you let your people drive on it, there's nowhere. So if we find repeated offenders, then we can start issuing citations, even if the kids are under sixteen years of age. It's still a vehicle, it still has to have inspection, so it has to have insurance, so it has to have registration. But we don't like doing that to a fourteen-year-old kid the first time. If it continues, then we do. But we do, as a practice, seize the motorcycle or ATV, and that could cost a parent up to three hundred dollars to get them back.
Now, what about, is there a curfew? I know growing up...
Yes.
If you got caught outside, you got...
There is a curfew in Falls Township. Ten o'clock, ten o'clock on weeknights, eleven o'clock on weekends.
But the same thing, if we catch these kids, are we just dropping them off, or are we hitting the parents' pockets?
It's up to officer's discretion. If we got one kid that was watching a movie at a friend's house, walking down the street, going to his house, we're going to take him home, we're responsible. If we stop an underage juvenile, we're responsible for his safety, so we have to take them home. As far as citations, we usually don't issue citations on the first go-around, and we, everything's computerized, we know. If we start catching a kid two, three, four times, then they're going to get cited, and they have to go in front of Judge Vasowski.
And just in regard to the more serious offenses, we've arrested three juveniles recently, two for burglary and one for robbery. In each of those instances, the juveniles were transported directly to the detention center where they were held securely. They had a hearing in front of a county judge. They were not released to their parents. So in any event where we suspected juveniles involved, especially in any of these burglaries, you know, we're treating it, along with the District Attorney's Office and juvenile probation, very seriously. We're taking them right out of the mix, and they're going to detention.
One more.
That's all right.
One more question. Would the police come out to our homes and check the security that we had in place? And give us, us an assessment and maybe recommendations?
No.
I, I'll refer that to Lieutenant Whitney, but here we'd be more than happy to.
Yes. Yes, we do that. We've done that for years, and we'd be happy to do that for you.
Just to clarify, though, it's not for the guys on the street to do that. That's the community policing unit, so you would have to set up an appointment. Don't expect a guy to come off the road to inspect your house, because I just don't want to be any confusion.
Call me.
Yes, sir.
Did you catch the guy who assaulted the woman? And the one burglar?
No, we did not. We did not take, we have a suspect in mind, but we did not take anybody in custody. We did take DNA samples from the crime scene. We're hoping that that will be cleared up.
And one last thing, I might not want to put this, but I'm on the traffic.
Oh, okay.
If you have a question about it, anybody, you know, feel free to call if you want to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I can hear you, Aaron.
Oh, I'm on the traffic.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. My name's Gordon Polford. I live in the Ellerberry section.
Gordon, could you just step up the microphone for us? Thank you.
I live in Ellerberry section, and I've been living here probably about seven years now. For a solution, did you mention you got cameras? So if this gentleman has a problem, can we come up and say, hey, can you put some cameras up for us? Or is there a process to get that camera system going? And like in my section, we get a cop one or two a month. As a homeowner with children, do I have a right to come up and ask, you guys, is there a problem? Do I need to be concerned? You know, stuff like that. I understand there's rules and laws, but as a homeowner, you guys come in my neighborhood. I need to know what's wrong with my neighborhood.
Gordon, if you just could step up the microphone a little bit more. Gordon, I want us to be completely crystal with you. You have any question, and you come up, I want it to be answered, within reason, to what we can answer you, okay? The same way, I can't ask for communication from the people in the community if we're not going to be communicative. It's all about us working together. If you have concerns about your neighborhood, of course you come up. Or you pick up the telephone, and you call our community policing, you call our detective bureau, you call Lieutenant Ward in charge of patrol. Lieutenant Plutnik, any one of us will be more than happy to sit down and speak with you. We'll come out to your house. That's what we get paid for.
I, I mean, I understand that. It's great. That's what I think. As a community, I want these people to understand that too, because I tried that about a year and a half ago. And I was able to talk to Officer, and he actually took the time to tell me what was going on in my neighborhood. And I do appreciate that, but I don't think as a community, you know, maybe the officer should need to start knocking on our doors a little bit, or leaving us a note saying, hey, we've been in your neighborhood, can you please call us if you see something? Because I didn't have that. And that's, I mean, I'm just trying to give you guys a major solution, so if we can come together a little bit. People feel uncomfortable coming down from the police station either.
Lieutenant Ward wants to address that, Gordon.
We, our patrol officers know, like, there's a burglary, you get called for a burglary to your house, they will do a canvas if they're not too busy, if there isn't more important calls waiting. They will do a canvas. If they don't, the follow-up detective that is assigned to it will usually do a canvas. As far as approaching officers, I've had in the past, you, you got to use your head. If you see an officer with a gun out pointing at somebody, I've literally had people walk up to me and say, what's going on? You know, so you got to pick your battles. If you see, it's a calm situation, it's no problem walking up to the officer, because we don't know who you are. If you're walking up behind us, we don't know if you're involved with the person that we're trying to take into custody or what's going on. But what you can always do, if you see a police officer in your neighborhood, stop, and you don't want to approach him, you could always call into the radio room and ask to speak to a supervisor. There's always a supervisor on the road, and he can answer the questions for you on the phone. Um, he can tell you exactly why they're there. He might not go into every specific detail, but he can tell you why they're there.
Come on up, ma'am.
Are we calling 911?
Ma'am, you have to come up to the microphone.
This is, it's, it's being televised.
It's being televised. That's why you have to come up to the microphone.
It's your chance.
Please, don't be shy.
Yeah, really.
You'll be fine.
You keep asking, telling us to call, but you don't. Are we calling 911? Are we calling Falls Township Police? Who are we calling for a problem?
Lieutenant Plutnik can address that.
Two ways to address the issue, actually, three ways. 911, the county uses enhanced 911. You call 911, they're going to know where the call came from. 215-945-3100, that's the non, the, it's a non-enhanced number for the county. They'll answer the phone at the radio room. It's still the dispatch center, but they don't know specifically where the call is coming from. So if you have a major issue, don't call that number. Call 911. Something happens, we know where to go. Uh, the 215-945-3100 number is, it doesn't know what an, address it's coming from, but you'll still talk to a dispatcher, so you can put your information out if you don't want the dispatchers to know. If you want to drop an anonymous tip or whatever it may be, they're not going to know who's calling. Or you can simply call nine, uh, 215-949-9100, which is the number for the police station, and then you can pick extensions from there. And somebody should get back to you. But if it's, obviously, if it's an absolute emergency, you need a cop, 911 is the number to call.
Well, I tell 911 too many times. They're usually callers. But, and Falls Township has been great. I just wonder, you keep saying, "Call us, call us," and, uh, so who are we supposed to call? And then you, uh, you say, "Please call to, and ask for a police officer if you need one." So we just need to know what that number is.
To, to clear that up, the way the patrol officers respond to stuff. The county dispatches us, like Lieutenant Plutnik said, from Ivyland. We don't run the radio room. They have their own procedures and policies. So when they call down to us, they say, "Check the area for juveniles, uh, North Park." But they don't say, unless you specifically say, "See the complainant, they live at this address, dah 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 dah," the officer will check the area. If there's no juveniles around, he'll go handle the next call. So if you want to see an officer, make sure you specify to the dispatcher, you want to see the officer. All 911 calls, obviously, we go see the, the complaint, we, because we don't know what's going on. And if you're ever in danger, what I wanted to bring up, if you think somebody's in your house, or you can't talk, even if you're on your cell phone, if you dial 911, we can tell where that's coming from. You don't even have to say anything on the phone. The police will respond to that location for an unknown problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Guido Marianni. Hi, Lieutenant.
Hi, how are you? It's not Tuesday.
It's not Tuesday, it's not Monday. Chasing the guy that lived at Town Parkway at seventy miles an hour, nailed him near the Walmart, you know? So I'm waiting to be called to court for that. He hit my car and kept on going.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Foolish man, didn't know who I was. Well, I'm here in the night. There's a lot of people seeming just concerned. What am I going to do? How can I defend myself? Let me tell you something. At what point do my possessions cease to be a part of myself? I intend to protect my family. I intend to protect my possessions. There are fifty-three, thirty-five thousand of us here in Falls Township. There's fifty-three policemen. You folks need help. And I think, let the word go out, that as citizens, we're going to help you, we're going to back you up. If you've got things to teach us, like some of your programs, we're willing to learn, we're willing to get together, we're willing to become very aggressive, and let these people understand when they commit to Falls Township, that's not the place to commit a crime. How many people?
Very well said.
Some people see somebody breaking in, they don't call. I'm not getting involved. That guy's going to come back and, you know, do something to business. You want to be safe, work with your police, help these guys out, and be aggressive. Don't be afraid to be aggressive. The guy I nailed didn't know what to do when I caught him on Leavittown Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Guido. Before somebody comes up to the podium again, I'm, I'm going to have Lieutenant Whitney address some proactive programs that we've had in the past and that will continue to have emerged. We have a brand-new program starting next week. Also, Lieutenant Whitney will explain to you about the program.
Thank you. For anybody that's interested in learning about law enforcement and how we operate here in the Falls Township Police Department, for about the last year and a half, we've been running what we call the Citizens Police Academy. Uh, we typically meet on Wednesday nights. We run them in the spring and in the fall. We're starting again at the beginning of September. Uh, if you can give us ten weeks of your life on Wednesday nights from seven o'clock in the evening till nine o'clock, uh, we'll teach you everything about law enforcement that we can throw at you. Use of force, traffic stops, criminal investigations. Uh, we, we deal with homicide investigations. We give people an opportunity to, uh, to participate very actively in, uh, in conducting those kind of investigations after some rudimentary training. Uh, we teach people traffic stops. We have role players that come in, and we, our cadets actually go through conducting traffic stops and handling calls for service. Uh, canines, you know, anything you can think of in law enforcement, SWAT, dynamic entry, um, you know, we try to throw at everybody. We had a shoot-don't-shoot situation, um, that we threw at our last set of cadets. That was pretty fun for them. We had films that we filmed ourselves, and then projected up onto the wall, and gave them hearing and eye protection, and guns that weren't real, but looked real, and were really loud. And, uh, they got to react to that situation as if they were an officer. So if you're interested in how we operate here in the Falls Township Police Department, I would invite anybody to attend our Citizens Police Academy. In addition to that, uh, we're running a program this summer that starts next week. It's July fifteenth through the thirtieth. Uh, it's our inaugural Youth Citizens Academy Camp. That's more like a boot camp where, uh, children in this particular group, they're high school-aged children, uh, are exposed to a similar kind of training, but it's more condensed. It runs the fifteenth through the thirtieth. Um, you know, we've got drill instructors that yell at them, and, you know, nobody gets hurt. But it's, it's a realistic, um, experience for what a police academy is like. It's geared towards, uh, young people who are interested in careers in the military, law enforcement, fire, or EMS. We build good leadership principles, good group principles in this class, and we're going to follow up with a youth leadership program uh, ten, ten months out of the year. After that, we're going to invite those cadets to come back. So, um, we've got some good outreach programs there that can expose our young people and our residents, our adults, to how we operate here in the Falls Township Police Department. We would invite anybody to, uh, express their interest. If you're interested, contact me. There were a couple of other things that people brought up on the break. On the township website, just so you know, there's a, um, it's almost like a do-not-call list, but it's for solicitors to come to your house. Uh, you can find it on the Falls Township website. Uh, Lieutenant Arie, who isn't here tonight, uh, runs it. So you can either find it on the site or contact Lieutenant Arie if you do not wish solicitors permitted or otherwise to come to your house in the township. We can at least control the people who come in legitimately and apply for permits. There was a point brought up about guns in your homes. Just to only touch briefly, if you have a gun in your home, we would encourage you to lock it up. Part of responsible gun ownership is locking up your weapon. Uh, make it hard for somebody to try to steal it. Make it hard for somebody to access it who isn't authorized to do so. And, you know, it's very rare, Lieutenant Ward alluded to this, it's rare for us to have a burglar who enters a home knowing it's occupied. Uh, I was in detectives for fifteen years. We had very few of those. When somebody does that, it's obviously a much more dangerous situation, and just so you know, that's a strike in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. When we catch that individual and prosecute him, he's facing five to ten years in state prison, as opposed to whatever he might get otherwise from a judge uh, for doing a residential burglary. Uh, so it's, it's still a felony, but it's a more serious felony. And deadly force situations, they're not easy. If you come to my youth, uh, my Citizens Police Academy, I'll put you in those situations, and you can see how you'd react. They're extremely stressful. Uh, highly-trained professionals are very challenged in those kind of situations. I would hate to see any of you go through that. We all know you got to do what you got to do to protect your family, but, you know, our objective is to not place you in that kind of position. Uh, so, you know, we would encourage you to call us. Our response time in emergency situations is second to none. We will get a police car to your house and flood your neighborhood with cars as fast as you need them. When we had that incident in Thornridge with that woman who was home when somebody came into her house, I was there. The entire patrol division was there that was working. We had a perimeter set up. I was talking to people who were out walking their dogs, and, you know, we, we, we checked vacant houses. I mean, we, we are good at this, and if you need us, we will be there.
With that incident that Lieutenant Whitney's talking about with the Thornridge job where she encountered the man in her house, what happened there was, she pulled up the driveway, and she thought she saw someone in her house. But instead of calling 911, she thought she was seeing things, and she went into her house. She was in there for a while before she encountered him, and after she encountered him, she ran to a neighbor's house to get help, and it was like a ten-minute ta, time delay, because the neighbor ran to the house to help her first before anybody called. If you think that somebody's in your house, do not go in your house. Call us. Uh, we love to catch them in your house. If you go home, and one of the big things that we see during daylight burglaries is these people don't want to get caught in your house either. So if you have like a chain lock, it's happened over the years, people will leave their house and go to the store, and then they'll come back, unlock the door, and their chain lock is on, and they'll figure, like, what, how did that happen? Somebody's in your house. They don't want you to catch them. They want to hear it. So if you see that, you call right away. Um, don't ever hesitate to call us. You guys pay us. This is what we do, all right? You're not inconveniencing us. When we get these thefts from auto, and we go to one house, we get approached by five or six neighbors, they go, you know what, that happened to me last week, or that happened to me the other day, and we're like, we bang our heads because we're not, we might not be focusing on that area because we're getting calls from another area. If we know it's happening in your area, we can make plans for that, and we can address it.
Any more questions? Yes, ma'am. Good.
I have a question. I know everybody's talking about property in our houses and things like that. And I know last year, there was a car going around stealing people's tires, actually, off the cars. Did they ever catch this person? Because I seen the car last year. These have got to be pros. If, they're in a car, they're in a black car. I don't know whose car they touched, but we heard it, like, how a car goes up and has a sound, hydroxyl, whatever. I looked out the window. They were in a black car, didn't see the people, so I called the cops. They came, I said, they went that way. They were in a car. They're in a black car, stealing those tires off people's things. And then this year, uh, where I live, I could see...
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Could you step up to the mic just a little bit? I'm sorry.
Then I seen another car where I live, where the lot is, the cars were, the tires are off again. Did they ever catch this person?
Uh, I, I don't specifically remember the, the incident, and it happens infrequently, but it does happen, and when it does happen, it's usually two or three. And these are, like you said, they're pros. I think these guys are all from NASCAR, because they can go into these hotels, and what they'll do is they'll look for rental cars, because they know rental cars have good tires on them. And they will have those tires off when they're on video. They'll have that, four tires off in about sixty seconds, and they're in a car and gone.
Outside, making sure all my tires are on the car.
So, it, it goes back to, again, if you see something suspicious, you see a black car that you don't like, call us, and we might get lucky. But I, I don't remember the specific incident you're talking about. I don't think we caught them.
Really, in Thornridge, and then, really?
Yeah, I don't think we caught them.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're trying to build a new building. That's one of the reasons, uh, we're working on that.
I'm sure there must be more questions here. Yes, sir.
With people coming up to the house giving estimates, like free roofing estimates, things like that, has, has any of that been connected to any kind of break-ins? Because, um, recently, I don't know if it was a paranoia thing, but it seemed like the person was a little shady that came up to give an estimate. And I was just wondering if there's any reports of that happening, any kind of connection between burglaries and somebody casing the place? You know, like knocking on the door, see if somebody's home, type thing?
Well, first, let me say this to you. You felt uncomfortable, and that's, that's the first signal. That's the first red flag up there. And if they seem shady to you, the, and I'll let, uh, Sergeant Clark address this, but you know what? There's certain things you ask for identification, for, for stuff that you know that can't be changed, a driver's license, anything that you know. And if they refuse to give that to you, say, no, thank you, and then you pick up the telephone and you call us. If they're soliciting in Falls Township, they have to have some type of permit. If they don't have a permit, call us. Everything runs through, um, our office. We issue the permits out. But most of all, the red flag was that you felt uncomfortable. That's why you should call us. Use your own instincts. If it looks like a skunk, and it smells like a skunk, it's a skunk.
Has there any, been any history of, of a thing like that happening?
We've had, to answer your question directly, I, I can't recall a burglary scenario where it was somebody legitimately, you know, with a truck out front trying to, you know, resurface your driveway. I've had contractor frauds like that. However, I've had, uh, I, I can think of at least one burglar that I've arrested over the years that put on a tool belt to look like he was, uh, you know, a contractor. And it's typical for a residential burglar in Levittown and Fairless Hills in our community to knock on the front door. Nobody answers. They go to the back door, and they knock. Nobody answers, they try to break in. Somebody does answer, they make up a ridiculous story that makes no sense. So when somebody's knocking on your back door, and they have a ridiculous story that makes no sense, call us, because the guy's probably a burglar trying to break into houses. What we typically find is when we do a canvas when they have broken into a house, we'll find a neighbor who is home, and they'll say, well, yeah, that guy knocked on my back door. That was kind of weird. So, uh, the MO you're describing has been used by people who commit residential burglaries. I've never seen it connected to one of those businesses that actually has a truck out front and says, hey, we have this extra slag we want to put on your driveway, and the rain will wash it away tomorrow. will wash it away tomorrow.
What about for the recent incidents, recent burglaries? Has there been any connection with that?
No.
Although, like Lieutenant Whitney said, we do have information from some of the people we arrested that they did employ that common strategy. They did knock on the door, and when nobody answered, they knew it was safe, and specifically the one arrest we made in North Park, where he knocked on the door, no one answered, he went to the back, took the air conditioner out of the window, went in the house. So like Lieutenant Whitney said, if anybody knocks and comes up with a, the typical story is, does Mike live here? I'm looking, I got the wrong house, I'm looking for my friend. If that happens, you know, don't give them the benefit of the doubt, no matter how persuasive or smooth they are. Call us immediately and let them, let us go out there and verify their identity and their story because almost without exception, it is, that is all it is, is a story, is a ruse, to see if anyone's home so they can burglarize your house.
Thank you, sir. There's gotta be something out here. There's gotta be something bothering somebody here. Come on up here.
Only because my husband that said, told me to go up and ask, because of my...
Sorry, just gotta speak into that microphone.
Oh, I know. You have to stand close enough to kiss it so you can hear it. Anyway, does it make sense to have stickers that say you've got a security system, or does that just invite, you know, invite somebody to say, oh, they got a security system? I know how to get through that. Or does it warn them away?
You know, it depends on the burglar, and I know that sounds like an invasive answer, but...
I'll ask which one. I'll ask them when they come to the house. Which burglar are you?
You know, when we arrest people, when we investigate burglaries, and by the way, we make a very concerted effort between the patrol division and the detective division to process our burglary scenes. Without a doubt, we catch burglars because we collect evidence, and we do canvases and talk to neighbors and come up with witnesses. That's a procedure that works. It sounds old-fashioned, but it actually works. So we do it here a lot. And when we do that, we've seen burglaries with the alarm stickers there, and it's a ruse. We've had houses burglarized that have big scary dogs that scare me because I'm scared of dogs, and the people go in and still commit the burglary. Some people get scared away and some don't. It depends on the motivation of the person who wants to get in your house. The one thing that we do see that will stop a burglar is if they can't see what's on the other side of the window or the door. And Lieutenant Ward touched on this earlier, and I can't stress it enough, and ever since I've been a policeman, in my house, I cover the windows as soon as it's dark. My kids think it's because of zombies, but it isn't. If you cover up your windows, people will pick the house next to you whose windows they can see in because they're uncomfortable going into a home not knowing what's on the other side and not knowing if there's something valuable there. So the one thing you can do to try to harden your home as a target is when the sun's down and the lights are on inside so people outside could see in, cover your windows. And when you go to work and nobody's gonna be home, cover your windows.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I got in a little late. I'm not sure if you already covered. Are you gonna release the names of the people you arrested? Will those names become public?
The juvenile, no, we're prohibited by law, but the adults, the names are already out there that we have arrested.
That was in the newspaper, or...
It's common knowledge, it's public knowledge, it's, the complaints are public knowledge. You can go to district court and ask to see criminal complaints, and that's there. What we do release, the criminal complaints to the press, when I do a press release, I'll release the whole criminal complaint to the press, which they could get anyhow.
I see, okay. And so I was a victim of one of the burglaries, and was wondering if they'd be able to connect maybe some of the items in their possessions with some of the other burglaries? Is that, are you able to...
You know, that's something we always effort to do. There was a question about pawn shops earlier. We are participating in a, just to touch on the other guy's issue, we are participating in an online pawn shop program where we frequently monitor who's pointing material and try to match it up to material reported stolen to us. That's something that we attempt to do in every burglary. We try to get as detailed a description as possible from people like yourself, and I'm sorry that happened to you, by the way. It's a terrible crime to have somebody come in your home. We take those crimes very seriously, and we do our best to lock up the people who are responsible. And yes, we do try to find your property. We don't often find property. I would say our stats on recovering property are relatively low, you know, below 50%. But we're always seeking to improve that, and our participation in that online pawn shop program is one of the ways that we've been attempting to do that. Absolutely.
Good job on collaring some of those guys. That was a good job on your part, you know?
Thank you. It was a good team effort. Thank you.
I'm gonna add something to what you were just saying. So know your property, know what you have. I'm amazed a lot of times we'll go out and, or if we do recover stuff, we can't find an owner because people don't know what was stolen. We use a program called Leads Online for the pawn shop. They also have, I can't remember the exact name of it right now, but if you go to Leads Online, I believe it's leadsonline.com, there is a link for a program that they run that's free that allows you to put program, to put your property into the program, and then your computer would store a list of what you have. Burglar breaks in, oh, all right, this is missing. Well, what kind, what make and model was it? Well, if you go to the program, then, you know, it'll tell you because you already put it in there. Now, if they steal your computer, I guess you're out of luck on that one, but leadsonline.com, and there's a link, and I can't remember what it's called, but if anybody's interested, I certainly, in order to lobby, there is some flyers with the web address specifically for the free program that Leads runs for you to list your own property, and it stays resident on your computer. They don't have information. And I will also add this, that it is illegal for a pawn shop to take something with a serial number that has been obliterated or altered. If you have stuff that has serial numbers on it, take a picture of it with the serial number and know the serial number on your items. More expensive stuff does tend to have serial numbers on them, so know what you have and record what you have, including bicycles, so if something does go missing, you can lead us in the right direction. Listen, to piggyback on the two lieutenants here, and this is gonna necessitate a show of hands here. How many people in the audience here have sat down and taken the serial numbers and when you purchased it and the value, and put it in some place so, God forbid, you have a serious fire or a burglary or something happens? Could I have a show of hands of people who've done it? So there's more of us, and I'm one of these that hadn't done it, and I'm in the business. Pardon?
I photographed them too.
Yeah, that's another thing. You should photograph these things. And believe me, when you go to your insurance companies, and this is a no-brainer, you have the serial number, you have a photograph, you have all this stuff, and you put it in some safe place, if you have a safety deposit box, or you have a safe, or you just put it at a place where it couldn't get damaged in a disaster. But it's always a good idea to do this. In our busy world and our haste to do things, we don't do it. But we should promote that, and that's one of the things that we all should do, and we don't do. We're all negligent in doing that. We have busy lives, but it sure makes our job and your recovery and the, when you put in an insurance claim to get reimbursed back for something that was damaged or was stolen, it sure makes life a lot easier for you. There's gotta be more questions out here. Yes, ma'am.
You were talking about community events that involved adults and high school students. I was just curious, have you considered doing anything with middle schoolers?
Actually hope to expand our program to that next year. I'd love to do a Youth Citizens Academy for middle school-age children. We do have broad strokes of a curriculum that we can implement. However, this is our first year in running it, so we wanted to see how we did with the older kids first before we expanded it.
Excellent. And then I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. I've attended several of the community events at the park over the summer, and it's great to see your involvement there, your involvement there, and everybody loves the canines when they come out and do their demonstration, and...
Criminals don't.
No, but I just wanna say, I was very impressed because, you know, we've all heard about the Mike's Gun Shop robbery, and the officer took the time to actually explain how, what the dog, what role the dogs played in that, and it was amazing when I heard it, like that a dog jumped onto the roof to do its job, and that's just awesome. So I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We really appreciate that. Yes, sir.
You had touched on weapons in the house. Now, a criminal that'll come in while people are home is a different type of deal. I could rob in your house when you're not home, that's one thing, but somebody will come into your house when you're home, that's a whole nother ballgame. That's what concerns me. Two houses down, they were home in the house when these kid went in, or whoever it was went in the house. Now, I see a lot of talk about, on Facebook, about how they come in my house and they meet my Swiss and Westin and 45 in the butt and all this stuff, right? Now, I have a gun, I have a permit, but I don't wanna use it. But if I had to use it, what is the law? If somebody's in your house and you shoot them, and they leave, if they leave the house, am I in trouble? If they leave the house, get out of the house after I shoot them while they're in my house? I mean, what, can you touch on what the law is there? Because I don't even know.
Yes. The law for the use of force in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for either a citizen or a law enforcement officer is contained in what's referred to as Chapter 5 of the Crimes Code. So you could probably look at that online if you wanna follow up later and see more detail than what I'm about to say. But essentially, if you believe your life or somebody else's life is in danger, then you're justified to use force to protect your life or somebody else's life. It's a very big decision, and like I alluded to earlier, there are trained professionals that, you know, experience that stress and have to live with it forever, and it's a difficult situation to put yourself in. But the law allows you to defend your life or someone else's life if you're immediately, you know, in threat of death. If you did that and the person ran away, no, you wouldn't be in trouble. We'd just follow the trail of blood and get them.
Any more scenarios? Questions? Advice? There's gotta be something out here. Have we covered your trepidations as far as burglaries? Now I know how teachers feel in school.
And I put another plug in for town watch groups. You know, if you operate a town watch group, yes, it's time out of your life, and, you know, they don't meet every month or every week. Some of them meet every, you know, two months or every three months. However, when you run a town watch group in your community, what you get is you get a town watch meeting where an officer comes and talks about all the incidents that happened in your part of the township since your last meeting. So it's a great way to stay informed. It's a great way to have a forum on a smaller scale, similar to the one that you have now, where you can ask an officer questions like the question you just brought up, sir, or the other questions that people bring up. It's a chance to receive some education on different areas if you invite guest speakers. There's a lot of positives to it. It is, you know, another meeting that you have to go to, but it's a way to keep informed. Like several of you have said, you wanna know what's happening in your section of the township. The best way to make that happen is to form a town watch group, and an officer will literally come to your house or whoever's house the meeting is at and share that kind of information on a regular basis. If we can get to the point where we can automate that, like some other townships around us have done, and have that augmented by something online, we are interested in doing that. We haven't been able to make it happen yet.
What sections have you town watched?
We have three. We have Penwood Crossing, Breezy Acres, and Thornridge.
Anybody that would like to start a town watch, we'd be more than happy to help you.
So my contact information is on the website. You know, look me up, and I will put you in touch with the people who work with me in community policing, and we can set you up. It's an easy thing to do.
I'd just like to comment on our meeting tonight. In the past, when we did Coffee with a Cop, it's all about communication. I'm really big on communication, the lieutenant, everybody in our police department. I feel that we have an obligation to you to be communicative 24/7. I think if we're communicative with you, you in turn will be the same with us. I like the forum. I wanna continue this. I see this has been very successful tonight. The turnout has been nothing short of spectacular, far exceeded my expectations tonight because this was the result of the social network. I was going away to the fall. We were doing Coffee with a Cop, and we were getting maybe five, 10 people in there, and it was a nice cozy forum, but I wasn't getting these results. I can see that this is much more effective because you people are more apt, not only to come here, but it's more accessible for you. Most of the people work during the daytime, and I understand that. Just by a show, do you guys like this type of forum where you're able to come here and express your concerns? And certainly, we're not gonna do it every month, but every couple months, and if there's some pressing need, all you have to do is pick up the telephone and call my assistant, and we will make this happen. Or you can come in and talk to us. Our doors are open 24/7. There's always somebody here, there's always somebody here that'll talk to you. And if they're not, you pick up the telephone and you call me. It's my job. We're cops here, and we're here for you, and that's the job. We're here to keep you safe and do the best we can, but we need you. And I know I keep saying that tonight, but I mean that sincerely. And this is the greatest police department as far as I'm concerned. I love this place. I love this community. I grew up here. I cut my teeth here. I'm originally from Pendell, but this is where my home is. I live here. And you know what? We all have to work together here, and this is what it's all about. And, you know, it's a violent, it's violent times out here, but, you know, all this working together, we can overcome most of these obstacles. I know we're only 53, but we're 53 with 35,000 behind us. That's what this is about. I know you're not always gonna be happy with us, and we'll always listen and we'll entertain. We want comments, we want suggestions, we want you to reach out to us. If you can't, if you feel uncomfortable doing that, you just make an appointment and come in and do whatever. I'm not a big social network type person, that's not my forte, but my staff is here, and my assistant is, and you can always get in touch with me through her, and we're gonna keep doing this. We're not gonna do this every month, maybe every couple months. If something happens like this, I thought it was important for us to get this information out to you. I thought it was important to show that we are being proactive, that we do care, and that we're gonna keep on doing it. There's a lot of luck in this business, and sometimes you're lucky, but you know what?